I'm Jim Sands, I'm acting president of council tonight, President Pro Tem. Our president is sitting down there in the mayor's place because the mayor is out of town. He is act-- Mr. Bias is acting mayor. Tonight we have a special session which does not leave any place for announcements or comments from anybody, but we're going to begin with a short Finance and Personnel Committee meeting because at least one of the ordinances that we're going to be talking about tonight is for first reading and we want council to be somewhat aware of it. And because of that committee meeting, we're going to take a few minutes at the end of that meeting to ask our service safety director to talk about some developments with regards to the water project that's occurring on the south side of the city. Okay? So we're going to begin our Finance and Personnel Committee with-- we're going to talk about some 2010 budget amendments. And we have for first reading an ordinance amending this 2010 appropriation ordinance. And this has a couple of sections. Section one is just a correction. This language is incorrect. You'll see it corrected later on in section two. And auditor, did you want to talk about this or do you want me to?
The ordinance or?
Yeah.
I guess you can if you want.
I don't know, I can. Well, as member Sands said, there's a correction there where this money for the Curtis Mulligan Water Improvements was appropriated in our budget ordinance in the wrong transaction class, and that takes an act of council to change that. So we are decreasing, taking it out of the Water Debt Fund Transaction Class 400 and putting it in the Transaction Class 500. We are also adding the full amount for the project. The project involves a forgivable loan and grant. And so the first appropriation was only part of the full amount that we will get, so then we're going to appropriate the full $800,000. I guess the other two you can talk about if you want.
Neither two are kind of self-explanatory. We can talk about that. Any questions about this appropriation for the Curtis Mulligan Water Action? Again, when I introduce this ordinance, I'll talk about these other two that are pretty straightforward. We just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of this correction to this ordinance. Also, we had several other issues that we had discussed at our meeting with the auditor last week, and they're not yet ready to come to ordinance form, but I'm going to ask the auditor if she would like to talk about some of these issues that are out there right now.
Okay. Do I remember which ones what these were? Oh, all right. Well, are you going to amend 00110 to transfer that money and then reappropriate it in the sewer fund? That was one issue I had that 001 had first reading last week, and the money was appropriated in the sewer debt fund, and I would like it to be appropriated and then transferred to the sewer fund for expenditure rather than spent out of the sewer debt fund. We don't have Transaction Class 500s in the debt fund anyway. So, and as you know, we put a certain amount of our service charges into the debt fund to cover the debt payments for the sewer fund, but there's also some extra money there, and that money then can be appropriated and used for projects. But it should actually be spent out of the sewer fund and not the sewer debt fund. So that's just, you know, a change of the money and where it's going to be spent from. That's for Mill Street Sewer Improvements, Design Engineering.
The $20,000 additional, the sewers portion of that.
This one is, that's a different-- this is $35,000 just for the Design Engineering. Okay. We're going to change. So that was one thing we talked about, staffing ordinance changes.
This is not in 0810, and I don't seem to have any.
Oh, this is from last week.
Oh, okay.
You don't have that.
It's almost more of a clerical.
Right.
It's 750 as opposed to 758. This is not moving any of the debt.
Yeah, it is. No, it is. It is. We're using debt fund money, the extra money in there from the sewer fund.
Could we check and see if there's any money that we would have spent last year for Herald Square or anything else that he would normally use to do work like that? I mean, in the 200s or 300s to go into contract? I mean, so we don't have to go back and do it and wait on that? It's not that big a deal anyway because it's not going to get to any. If it's the case that he doesn't have that $35,000 in there, so it doesn't get slowed down?
This is second reading. We can, we need to amend it. We can do it in suspend, if we need, next reading.
Yeah, as soon as he knows what he already money is.
We can answer these questions.
That's up to you. I just, the money needs to be spent out of the sewer fund, not sewer debt fund. So whether you use money that's already in the sewer fund or you want to transfer this money over, that's up to you. Okay. Did you want to talk about the staffing issues or? There weren't too many. That was the other thing.
Yeah, just bring that up. We don't have that on again. We're talking about amendment.
Right. There was, there were three part-time employees who were put in as step two, but they move up in their steps because they're part-time every two years rather than every year. And so instead of being at step two, they're still at step one for another year. I think that's the only other thing that there's already-- is there one already going through that amended the minimum wage?
Yes.
Amount, so.
I didn't think, you know, we had all talked about it and we felt the amount was so small and the people were, at least two of them were so valuable that we didn't really care that they were getting this extra bump because we changed the ordinance. I mean, we had done, we knew what we were doing when we did it.
Well, the top of the page still says they get their steps every other year.
Uh-huh, and we did it. And we did it. So, and it's peanuts, anyway.
We had changed the anniversary date for everybody to January 1st, and so I think that's how that all got done. So that's the discussion we'll have later. Again, because we have this agenda for special session, we're just going to read these for second reading, and then if there are any changes we need to make, we'll do it a week from tonight. In the meantime, we can discuss that. So really, this committee meeting was to make everybody aware of the amendments to the 2010 budget, which will be up for first reading, and I think that was it. So again, we'll read everything for second reading, and if changes need to be made, we'll make them at the regular session in one week.
I have two other little things that I want to go ahead and bring up since this is our committee time, is there are, there's no money for refunds in the Recreation Fund, and they need $500. Those are Transaction Class 600s, and there's no money in there to move around. There's only two account lines in there, so that is an appropriation that they are going to need. And then I'd like to unappropriate money in this 866, which is the Internal Service Medical Fund. We've appropriated $4,600 in there. That was appropriated in there last year. We didn't use it. I don't think we need that. I suspect that was a one-time payment that we made a couple of years ago, but isn't something that we do all the time for the COVER insurance. So I think we should just go ahead and unappropriate that because we don't need it. And that's $4,600.
And this refund line in the Rec Department is 500?
500 is all they asked for.
Okay. I mean, is that going to take them, is that?
You know, I didn't question that. I don't know. Can I find out? Maybe they need a little bit more? I mean, they have money to appropriate, and it'd be better to do it now because there isn't money to move in, move into there if they come up short.
That's my question. It seems like such a small amount that could be two memberships or something.
Right, yeah. And that's what happens. People sign their child up for a class or a team or something, or like you said, you know, and decide they can't do it, and then they ask for a refund. And we've always been good about doing that, and so, yeah, it might not be enough for the whole year. So, I'll ask, I just got an email asking for 500. I didn't question it, so.
And it was for refunds, you said?
Yeah.
Okay.
So again, we'll, we'll talk about that, yes. And so, anything else for this committee meeting?
I have one item, and it was brought to my attention this afternoon. We have a server room downstairs in City Hall, and it is the air conditioning unit in order to keep it and maintain it cool in order for the equipment is failing. Lands and Buildings have worked on it last week and then again today. They cannot fix this. They're asking for $5,000. It would be a, similar to what was put in over at the Police Department. It has to be professionally installed, so the unit itself was about $4,000 plus installation. And I hadn't identified, so I'm asking where we can pull that money from, whether or not...
For the server room, Paul and I talked briefly late this afternoon, whether you want that out of the general fund, out of--
That could be capital, couldn't it not?
Capital.
Over 500, and I used to life in over three years. I'd yank it out of capital.
And when we, for clarification for viewers as well, when we say server room, we're talking about the computers. We're not talking about, we're not talking about the coffee room. We're talking about--
Yeah.
Exactly.
It's not a playroom, right?
Yeah, exactly. We're talking about the mainframe.
Before they serve the administration.
Exactly.
Before they hang out. It's not that.
A lot of big equipment that generates a lot of heat--
Exactly.
--in there, but that's what runs our computers throughout the city, and they need to regulate the temperature in there. So yes, capital, general funds, cable franchise, I don't know. That amount could come from any, almost anywhere.
All you had?
Yes.
Before we close this meeting, I'm going to announce that the Finance Committee is going to be scheduling a regular meeting on Thursday afternoon at 2:00 with the auditor, members of her staff. Often the Service Safety Director and the mayor are there, and we usually meet in the mayor's office, 2:00 on Thursday. This is an open meeting. People are invited to come. Please call Charlene Moller, the mayor's secretary, to make sure that the meeting is going as planned. We have canceled some because people are out of town or we don't have issues to talk about. So some of these issues that were brought up tonight, we will discuss on Thursday afternoon, and there will probably be others that we'll discuss also. So we're just making this announcement that this is a standing meeting each Thursday with the Finance Committee, the auditor, the mayor, and other staff members. And with that, I'm going to close the committee meeting and ask our Service Safety Director to give us a quick discussion about the new water lines in the Mulligan.
I know it was a long day for everybody on the south side, but as of 6:40 tonight, all 33 streets are back in water. They're in the process of filling the Longview tank. It's up to about 18 feet of water. Full is 25, so they'll continue to fill it for the next two to three hours. All of the old lines have been capped off. A boil order will be placed, and we anticipate it being able to be lifted at 6:00, sixish, tomorrow evening. Of course, everybody would be notified if that had to be extended. Just to share with you what a busy day the crews had, they also had two breaks at McGuffey and Harris, and they've repaired those. So there's also a boil order right now for Ransom, Harris, Tulane, Woodside, and McGuffey. And the sewer crew went out and jetted two sewer clogs, one at Brown and one at Montrance and Morrison. There are three other small breaks in the city that are planned to be repaired over the next two days. They're affecting one to two homes, and a great impact. People on the south side will see that the fire hydrants will be running because they're still flushing out. Just wanted to give an update.
Thank you for that, and thank you to the crews who have worked tremendously hard, amazing hours that they've put in on this project. Thank you for the patience, the people in that neighborhood. We will see a significant difference in water service there.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you. We're going to begin our special session, and again, acting as President Pro Tem, I'll be reading these ordinances for second reading. Don't anticipate any action on them at this time. Ordinance 0110, an ordinance authorizing design of the Mill Street Sewer Replacement Project 252. Ordinance 0210, an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise and accept bids where necessary and enter into contracts for design and construction engineering and construction of the Jeff Hill Water Line Sewer Line and Street Rehabilitation, Project 251, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance 0310, an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise and accept bids where necessary and enter into contracts for construction, for construction engineering and construction of the Richland Avenue Improvements, Project 230, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance 0410, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to extend the current contract with late front lines incorporated, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance 0610, an ordinance amending ordinance 014609, the authorized staffing levels. Ordinance 0710, an ordinance granting a revocable license to Anthony Ferion, owner, 6 Mill Iron Street, for the use of the city right-of-way for fence. We do have one ordinance for first reading that we discussed a little bit earlier. This is ordinance 0810. As a member of the Finance Committee, I'll introduce this. This is an ordinance amending the 2010 appropriation ordinance. Two sections. First section is decreasing the Water Debt Fund, Transaction Class 400, by $320,000. The mayor, the auditor talked about this earlier. We're just making a correction here. Section two has three items that we want to deal with here. $5,000 appropriated to the general fund for code enforcement copier lease. The code enforcement office, in their presentation of their budget, left out some funds to lease their copier for this year. Obviously, that's a necessary item for any office. Also, the second action would be appropriating $20,000 to the community center for a new fire alarm system. The community center, how many years has it been there? But the fire alarm system has been maintained and is being maintained regularly, and in the past few years having a lot of problems with it. So the best thing to do at this point is replace it. $20,000 is the amount that is estimated it would cost. Member Butler?
Thank you, sir. And I might acknowledge and recognize as well that the community senator is important to our community on a lot of levels. It houses a certified daycare center along with an adult senior citizen center. So I think these are extremely relevant in acknowledging safety issues pertaining to fire.
Jim, I would also include the fact that the present system requires about a $5,000
annual contract to keep it going, and the new system that we would hope to would be maintained by our own personnel.
Oh, good point. And finally, the third action in this section two would be the correction that the auditor talked about, moving this money from the water, into the Water Debt Fund, Transaction Class 500, and including all of the funds to be expended for the Curtis Mulligan Water Improvements, a project which is nearing its end for $800,000. And as the auditor mentioned, a large part of this is a forgivable loan, and another part of it is a grant. So we have a lot of help with this project.
Jim, can I also throw back to the last one, the community center fire alarm? Again, that is from a fund that can only be spent on items associated with the community center because of the way that it was built with certain tax money. So it's not likely we could use that $20,000 elsewhere.
It has to be spent after two years.
Yes, yes.
Okay? Any other, any questions about ordinance 0810? Then I'm going to call our special session.
That I've given out, which is the memorandum of understanding. I'll just touch on a couple of those as services that we've provided, and then services that we can provide when requested. The Soil and Water does, you know, basically provide assistance to the city, to the landowners, to potential homeowners, developers, and contractors through things such as soil, homesite, drainage, and erosion, retaining wall, parking lot, and landslide evaluations. Last year, I believe there were 18 total evaluations done for the city, addressing one or all of these, pretty much all of these evaluations here. The MOU does state that the district will assist the city in the classification and delineation of zones of landslide potential. The ordinance has certain requirements for land having moderate or severe landslide potential. The county soil survey book was recently updated, and approximately 70 mapping units were added mainly to match up the adjoining counties. Maps that we used to have, if we would have one soil map unit on the county line, the adjoining county may have something totally different. So they went through, went back through, and tried to match up all of those soils units so that they could cross county boundaries more easily, and that's what pretty much gave the additional 70 mapping units. And so what we were able to do with this was provide Paula with a copy of all of those mapping units, and they were broken down into those categories of none to slight, moderate, and severe landslide potential in the event that we would come across any of those mapping units when we were doing soil evaluations. Probably not going to find too many of those in the county because, again, they are just addressing the border, the county borders. When we're asked to do a soils evaluation, we actually will go out, take a soil sample, match that up with what the soils survey book says, put that on in a document, list its characteristics, and then we will identify based on this information if it is a slight to, none to slight, or moderate or severe landslide potential, and we'll provide that to the code enforcement for their information. Another item in the MOU is that the district will provide information and education regarding services available by the district to Athens city and county residents. And we did just put a book, we just completed this, which is a homebuyer, homebuilder guide that I think will help with this, with this request. The guide was recently updated to assist prospective homebuyers and homebuilders with a list of procedures to follow and items to consider when looking at property for development. Things like soils, water supply, household sewage treatment systems, regulations and requirements. It has community features. It has natural features and drainage characteristics, and it also has a pretty comprehensive list of agency contact information in the back so that people will know who to call, or at least we've given them a phone number to call. We like this form a lot better than the one we've had previously because it does kind of, it asks questions, I mean, it asks questions to where people, you know, it might, you know, help them think, you know, to ask other questions, or maybe something that they didn't even realize they needed to ask. These are all kind of comprised from questions that we've been asked over the years, obviously. And this was a collaborative effort. I know Bob Eichenberg worked with us, Paul Loeb worked with our office, the City-County Health Department worked, the Engineers Office, so this was, this is a nice little book, and I hope it'll be very useful. We plan on making copies of these in-house, save on some of the costs, and distributing these to, hopefully you guys will be able to put some in the city building, I will put in the courthouse, put them in lending institutions, just a variety of places around the county so that people will have these to look at. And then the last thing that I have before I turn it over to Teresa is the technical support to the city, what other additional technical support that's available to you through memorandums of understanding that we have with other state and federal agencies would include an engineer, a urban stormwater specialist, soil scientist, a district conservationist, a civil engineering technician, and a conservation specialist. So if we're not able to answer those questions that someone may have, we have this, these additional resources to call upon. So with that, I'll turn it over to Teresa.
Thank you very much. As Kathy said, I'm Teresa Caldwell, and my business is education. And so education is very much a part of what we do at Soil and Water. And what you see here is just a summary of what we did in 2009. As you can see, we're very busy in our office with education, and what I'm going to cover tonight merely scopes in on what we do which involves the city. Our district does encompass the entire county, but what I'm going to focus on is what we do with the city. Obviously, city schools are very involved with what I do. These are the buildings that I was in during 2009. Some of the educational programs that I've presented include what you see here but are not limited to. This is just a little bit of, just a sampling of what we do. It's interesting that the Dig It! soils program that you see up there each-- It's interesting that the Dig It soils program that you see up there each year, the National Association of Conservation Districts, NACD, puts out materials that we can use for stewardship week, which takes place in April, and we take advantage of those materials. Last year's theme was Dig It, The Secrets of Soil, which was a cooperative effort in their materials between the NACD and the Smithsonian Institute in Washington. So, our materials came directly from the Smithsonian and it was wonderful. This program was very well received here in Athens County, so much so that I had to reorder materials. I had many teachers contact me on this one. And so, we are very, very pleased to have that association with the National Association of Conservation Districts. Waterfest is one of our biggest events that we put on. I broke it down there a little bit for you. Last year, we had the entire third grade class of Athens County, I should say, every single third grader in Athens County signed up to come to Waterfest. We were just, we were so pleased. It was amazing. Two hundred and seventy-six of those students were Athens students, Athens City School students, and we were very pleased to have them come. For the first time, we actually had to take that program indoors. In all the years that we've been presenting Waterfest, never had to take it indoors. But we did, and we had the cooperation of Athens High School for this. In fact, I, you know, kind of point out that it was third graders that we did this program for, but in fact, the educational opportunity of this goes way beyond the third graders because more than 100 high school students are actually involved in helping us put this on. There are probably 13 other professional agencies that come and help us out. You know, we get help from ODNR people and from, you know, cooperative extension. We have just a lot of people, Division of Forestry and that, those folks all come in for this program. But there's over 100 high school students that actually, they're from the environmental science classes as well as the FFA program at Athens High School. And these kids actually, there's 30 different stations. To accommodate all these students, we have to have 30 different stations. And many of those stations are manned by high school students who put the program together themselves. So, as part of their learning opportunity, they actually become mentors for third graders. And so, it's really wonderful to bring those high school students in for this program as well. Okay? One of the other educational things that we're very, very pleased to be involved with is Envirothon. Envirothon is actually a national program. It's called Canon Envirothon nationally. Here in the state of Ohio, it's broken down into areas. We're in Area 5 that encompasses 17 counties. In our office, we are, part of our duties is to help the Envirothon teams actually prepare for these competitions. In a nutshell, the competitions cover environmental sciences in forestry, wildlife, aquatic ecology, current environmental issues, and soils. And these students need to know a lot about that. We are pleased that here in Athens County, we have quite a reputation for putting together some really outstanding teams. And more than a few times, those outstanding teams have come from Athens High. In fact, just last year, you see here represented the elementals, five young ladies from Athens High School that not only won the multi-county Envirothon, they also won the Area 5 Envirothon, 17 counties as I said. They went, they represented our area at the state competition, and that was at Kenyon College this year back in June. And they won fifth place, but I have a picture there that shows them actually taking first place for the oral presentation, which is a very coveted, coveted presentation where you bring all aspects of these environmental studies together and you have to solve a problem and they've got four hours to do it, to put together a presentation, and all five of them have to be involved in the presentation. So, it's outstanding that we have quite a history. In fact, Athens High School has sent two teams to nationals in the past from the state of Ohio. We've represented them. Okay. Some other things that we're involved in is like passport to fishing. That is a cooperative effort with Athens County Bass Masters. There are many youth from the city of Athens that actually participated in that. We had 98 students. That will take place again at the end of February, and the city rec center is actually going to host that for us. That is accompanied by a youth fishing day, which takes place later in July, and out at Lake Smoding. Some of the other things are Ag Awareness Day. We've been doing that for many years at the Athens County Fairground and usually have a lot of students from the city of Athens. Scouting outing, so many of our local young men come out to Borough State Park and take part in that, and we have, if you will, a booth or a station there. Low Safety Day was something that we became involved with and it was an opportunity for us to use our EnviroState model, which also is another cooperative, not only with ODNR Soil and Water Resources, but also with your own Crystal Kennard from City Water and Mike Cooper from City and County Health Department. We're, along with our office, we're members of the Sweets team, which is source water education teams, and we have models that we can bring into the classroom and show kids how it all works, you know? We have a groundwater model that actually gives them an opportunity to see that if you pour something on the top of the earth and it ends up in your groundwater. So, we're very pleased to be part of that, that cooperation and have these models to be able to bring in for education. We've also been involved in Camp Red Arrow for many, many years, too. Athens County Fair is always a big thing for us and always involves a lot of, a lot of folks. And we try to put together a series of programs throughout the week that have to do with environmental or natural resources or ag education. Some of the workshops that we've put on, we co-sponsor the Southeastern Ohio Urban Tree Care Conference. We also co-sponsor an elected officials tour. Another thing that we do every other year, which we're planning to do again this spring because it's that every other year, is a conservation connection tour. And this year, we're, it's in the planning stages, but Kathy and I are brainstorming on an Athens loop, a city loop, for some things that we have in mind to show off here in the county. We're pleased that each year we award a conservation educator of the year, and this passed in 2009. Both of those educators, elementary as well as secondary education, came from the Athens City School System. Gina Tooki from the Plains Elementary and Sabrina Stalder, who is the FFA teacher at Athens High School. She is also a product of the Athens City School System, I might add. She's a graduate of Athens High. Our contests involve, are open to all county folks, but we always get a lot of youth that come and take part in these contests. The high school essay competition always has a lot of science students from the high school take advantage of that, of that competition. Last year was biodiversity and a changing world. And let's see, then we had groundwater protection, which was this last fall. Multi-county soil competition is also open, and that's usually FFA students. And thanks to Sabrina Stalder, we do have an FFA program at Athens High School, and they do participate in that, as well as the poster essay contest. The photo contest is something that we started last year. You'll notice in your packet there, we're launching it again for this year. That was very successful last year. We were very pleased. It's an all Athens County. That means amateur photographers, they all must be from Athens County, any age, and we've had them from elementary school right up to the seniors of our area. And we are fortunate enough to actually put together a calendar with the winners of our contest. And so, we're very pleased with that. And if I can be so bold as to say that, we still have some of the calendars available at the office if you're interested. The scholarships we provide, that's another thing that if any of you know a high school student that's graduating this year and looking for scholarship money. The scholarship is for students who plan to major in natural resources or agriculture, some kind of an agricultural major, and we do have scholarships. Those are open right now through the end of March. So, now's the time for them to be picking up their scholarship applications. We also have the Forestry Camp scholarship that we provide. The Earth Team Volunteer Program, and then I have quite an extensive resource library which is available to all of our educators within the system. These are from seaming nets to dip nets to resource books, even guides. So, all the teachers have to do is contact me and we'll make arrangements for them to borrow these things. Okay? Some of the service programs we have are the seedling sale, which is going on right now. You'll also see a catalog for that in your packet there. We use the funds from our seedling sale to actually fund a lot of our educational programs. So, we count on that to help us out. Do you have any comments to make on the seedling program? And some of the other things that you can see there, fish sale, geotextile, topographic This brings us to Southeastern Ohio Rain Gardens. We are getting ready to, if you will, launch a brand-new program, and we are hoping to get the support of the council and the city of Athens for this program.
Why a rain garden? Basically, rain gardens are a natural way to reduce or to use rainwater as a resource list instead of a waste product. And basically, those are some things that rain gardens offer to reduce stormwater runoff, reduce the flooding, filter pollutants from runoff. They use native species to help with soil compaction. They add beauty to the property, habitat, food, and cover the property as well as attracting pollinators to your, to your area based on what you plant. You know, they can, they can attract pollinators and we all know how important that is to our food supply. So, there is a brochure in your packet that talks about rain gardens. The Soil and Water District has scheduled a meeting to kind of, it's an informational slash organizational first, first meeting, and that's tomorrow at our office from 1:00 to 3:00. If anyone is interested to attend, by all means, we would love to have you. I know we've sent out invitations. I think we heard back from Paul Vog and Ron Lucas and some other elected officials in the county and even agency people just to kind of help us launch this, come in with ideas, and hopefully this is something that we can, we can work together and implement in Southeast Ohio. We have an individual from the Franklin Soil and Water District. They have a very active rain garden program in their county. There are several other counties around the state that have active rain garden programs. This just happens to be ones that are at the Lazarus in Columbus. There's the rain garden and then the inlet there. Some of these you may recognize, the Division of Wildlife in Columbus, the OSU Ag Building in Columbus, and then COSI Rain Garden with the bridge, and then the ODOT. There's one at the ODOT headquarters in Columbus as well. So, we have lots of other pictures. But hoping that that's something that we might be able to incorporate into Athens, at Athens, to help with some of the rainwater, stormwater runoff, and to help reduce some of the flooding issues that we've had maybe on the East End. It's a start, but we'd like to bring some of that success that some of the other counties have questions that you might have.
Thank you. I mean, I wasn't aware of the depth of the educational programs that you offer. Thank you. It's very valuable as well as the services to the city in terms of landscape developer, in terms of development. Are there any questions?
Thank you for your presentation. I just have one quick question pertaining to your internet or web presence. I see the information that you presented in the packet, I think is very helpful and beneficial. I'm just curious if it's also accessible on the internet?
We are working on our webpage.
Okay.
Sorry to say that it's not up and running, but it will be.
Sure.
This information, I mean, this, this alone with all the other publications that we offer will be on, will, you know, be on the webpage. So, yes, very good, and we can even provide that, too.
Well, if we have a electronic copy, I know I got a draft, we can just put it right up there as a link.
Because I have, I can put this in a PDF form and give this to you as well if you're just doing it on your webpage, too. That's a good idea.
Thank you. And there's one last thing from Soil and Water Conservation District. As with many important programs across the state, they saw some state budget cuts this year. And so, Kathy, if you want to speak for a moment about that?
Yeah. And again, in your package, there's a cream sheet, a yellow piece of paper that basically is a resolution of support of Soil and Water Conservation District funding. And I guess what we are asking for is for you to consider adopting that resolution. Just some brief background, as a result of passage of House Bill 1, the state match dollars, which I talked about briefly earlier, was severely reduced, and that has to do with state funding and how that percentage of what we get. Last year, I think we got, it was in the mid-eighties, and then for this fiscal year, we're looking at about a 53% state match. So, that's a sizable reduction in funds. So, what we're asking from organizations and partners that we work with is to possibly support this resolution so that we could pass that on to our legislative contacts and show the support for Soil and Water Districts and state funding.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
If there are any other questions. But that's it for Soil and Water Conservation District. Thank you for coming. Does anyone have any miscellaneous that needs to be addressed? All right. With that, we will move on to the next committee, Planning and Development.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is looking at the liquor permit request put out by Grand Red Chero. This was requested by Paula?
Yes, I have Dan Gates here. If I can ask him to come up. Sit next to him.
Amazing. I'm just trying to get my little apparatus here.
It's my understanding, Debbie, that the council has received the notice for the permits of this meeting. Understanding is to determine whether or not you feel there's a need for a hearing.
I think there was also some questions about what type of permit it was. The permit application notice says that it's a B new, which is not necessarily true. The type, permit class is a D 5I. So, I know that there was some concern and discussion last week about this, what exactly that means and how transferable it is and if it goes out of business, whether it becomes a bar, and those sort of questions, so.
Okay. Can I step back? What, you said B something?
It's just how the permit application notification comes to us.
I see.
It's a little, it looks confusing.
Somebody just from the state senate into?
Yes. We get a notification anytime anybody applies for a permit.
Yeah, it's a D. It's a D 5I. It's non-transferable. It's for restaurants. It's for communities under 100,000 people. It's basically for economic development zones. They have to be a certain size, have a cer, serve a certain amount of people, and also the menu has to be, you know, a certain way. It can't be just bar food and et cetera. So, it's.
And this particular restaurant's opening up where CC's was?
The old CC's was, yes.
Where Petland and Staples is.
Yes, right.
Okay. Well, I think that's one of the concerns that was brought up to me was the notification is somewhat confusing. People were concerned that it was a B.
And that's what the state sent you or?
It's how it's, yes. It's, if you can, you can look at it. It's just a notification.
Can I look at it?
So, it's more of the how it's written that it's more confusing. See, it has this, and then down here it says B new. And I think that's where most people are getting confused.
Okay. I'm the only one that makes mistakes.
Well, I don't, I don't think it's a mistake. It's a way of how they classify and how they just write their notification out. But I think that most of my concerns were addressed by the fact that it is for restaurant.
Yes.
And for economic development zones.
Is there any other questions for Mr. Gates? So, Paula, do you have any more?
So, Paula, do you have any more?
No. I brought Mr. Gates here to answer any questions.
We appreciate you coming out.
Oh, no problem.
Again, it's pretty much locked into the location of where it would be, and it does have to be a restaurant. It won't become one of these floating ones that can move or tracks or something like that.
And I think that's the track. So. Do people feel like we need to have a hearing on this? Or, so, okay, great. Well, thank you. I know we're getting a request to hearing.
Easier than you thought, huh, Dan? Easier than you thought, huh?
Well, it's okay.
The next item on my agenda is, last year, we were working on the amendments to the city code Title 23, zoning code, Chapter 2304, which defines what gardens are. And we had a discussion last year on this. Basically, what this is trying to do is move away having gardens as, into a permitted use as opposed to a conditionally permitted use. And we decided that we needed a definition of what domestic animals was that is used in this. It would be in the Section 3 definitions in the amendment. And we, I wrote that domestic animals are those animals commonly accepted as domesticated household pets. Domestic animals shung include dogs, cats, caged birds, gurbles, hamsters, guinea pigs, rats, mice, and chelas, ferrets, domesticated rabbits, fish, arthropods, non-poisonous and non-venomous reptiles, or amphibians. And these came from, this list came from other cities' lists and interviewing people who run, like, fish and stuff, local pet food place, to see what basically people do have right now and what they consider pets. And so, pretty straightforward. I mean, I could rewrite it to do, instead of doing animals themselves, I could do it to, you know, I have arthropods here because I didn't want to get down to naming all the miscellaneous.
It looks like the little?
Well, people have trachylas and scorpions and things like that, and.
They don't bother me like the snakes.
I know, it's like, where do you draw the line of what animal will you have in your house? So, that's cockroaches? Those big kissing cockroaches? I know people who do have those Madagascar kissing cockroaches. Oh, Jesus. Yes. Yes, you could, I mean, people, I know people, that some places, the rhinoceros beetles are very popular, these huge beetles. I just, so, we would like to put this into the ordinance that has already had a public hearing and discussion about the gardening at this time, and then have it read next week.
Will that require another public hearing or not?
No, no, it's just defining, it's defining it. And at some point in the future, the definition can change, so.
I've got to ask. Caged birds, chickens?
Mostly caged birds, maybe like thingy parakeets and such. I think that's a, caged birds is direct wordage from the Portsmouth ordinance.
So, it doesn't say caged fowl?
Birds. No. People probably can have almost any type of birds. Personally, I think I'd rather have a chicken as a neighbor than a cockatoo. From my experience, the cockatoos and parrots are really incredibly noisy. So, you know, I think that if they become nuisances to other parts of the zoning, it will play. The biologist in me wanted to just put it down with a different, you know, phyla, but I was more specific. Don't bother. Just put A's. Yes.
I'm glad you're doing this, because now George will no longer be in violation of the code with his new garden.
I think many, many people.
I know. You better stop that, they'll be out here giving you a ticket because expanding his garden. How it ever got in is another whole story.
Any other questions, concerns? So, I will have this as for first reading. The third item on my list is a right-of-way issue that's been floating out there for several years. Currently, the city has granted a right-of-way, and I had passed these out with the map, and basically, it's the Morris Avenue right-of-way. And this was granted in 2005. And right now, it's an ordinance granting a revocable license to Ohio University to allow planned unit development that will approach upon the city right-of-way. And it has not been revoked, and it's just sitting kind of out there. And I think it's probably in the best interest of the city to revoke it because the planned unit development that was being planned there is no longer being proposed. I don't think it's good to have a right-of-way just floating out there with the university's name on it, to tell you the truth. Questions? I'm not sure how we would do just ordinance to revoke it. That would be for first reading next week, too. I would, a quick miscellaneous, just, this is real quick with the city's streets and sewer and everything. They've been doing a really good job. One of the sewer blowouts was on Montrose and Morris, and that was my son come in and said, "I saw this thing pop up, and all this steaming water came out." And I was like, "Oh, my goodness." And I called, and they came right out. So, I think that with all the freezing pipes and everything, they've been doing a phenomenal job. And also, I think the city streets, it's been doing a good job, especially right at this point where the problems that we've been having with all the cold. So, I'd just like to put forward, thank you, I've had a lot of people say thank you, too. Mr. Butler?
Thank you. And I might add, too, as well, for acknowledging our gratitude to the city, the Athens Police Department Officers Flick and Lieutenant Williams were really helpful in an incident Friday on the west side regarding a dog that had been loose in neighborhood and had been terrorizing other dogs and people. And they reported, when it was reported, they showed up and handled the situation very professionally, and the neighbors and the community members that acknowledged this to me were really thankful. I just wanted to appreciate my thanks as well.
So, that's the miscellaneous. Kudos to the city under planning and development. I love this. It's a difficult time. That's all I have.
Transportation committee?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have four items tonight, and the first one being the International Street Fair, and I think Mr. Butler handled this legislation last year.
Last year, thank you. Yeah, thank you very much. I was just attempting to acknowledge that briefly, that it is that time of year that begins planning for the spring, in which we're receiving acknowledgement that, from the committee who runs the International Street Fair, that it'll be held this year, Saturday, May 15th, from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And this is an annual event which takes place in our community and is, I think, again, one of the successful events and benefits of our community to take place. So, I wanted to acknowledge that to the City Service Safety Director, that these are the times that we're looking at again for this year.
They have requested an earlier close down, a 7:00 a.m. I mean, traditionally, it's been 9:00 a.m. It's not that we can't do that, but I'd like to get touch base with the Public Works Committee to that time.
Sure.
At 7:00 a.m. I don't think there have been any issues in the past, but if you're in communication with them, you might want to field that question on the request for the early hours. Somebody might already have, is that you, Debbie? Okay.
Andy said that one before.
Okay, all right. Then you got it.
Thank you. Second item is this.
Are we ready to put up an ordinance regarding the street?
Yes, we will be.
Okay.
The next item is the salt bin and the rehabilitation of that salt bin storage area. We discussed this briefly in December. It's a 40-year-old facility, and the new storage bin will be in the same location. It will have a slightly larger footprint. This storage site, along with the Herald Avenue, has been, two sites, as I understand, that have been responsible for what chloride runoff we may have had in the groundwater and correcting this, along with the completion of the Herald Avenue project this year. We'll take care of that situation. So, the salt bin will prevent that runoff, and then it will also have storage for adequate supply of the salt. So, we have it on hand. And I think we had a situation last year where we didn't have enough salt on hand, in part because of the storage area and needing that, so. So, we'll be requesting money for the construction of the rehabilitation of that bin.
Review how much it is again, Chris, please. Forty?
Oh, no.
How much?
I think it's more than that, I'm sorry. I'm thinking Brian Lagoon.
Hundred and fifty?
It's 150, and Andy thinks he might have to build it under 100. But he is looking at prefab structures that would also cover, as they come in and out, the trucks for loading, so.
And it's going to have a hard surface, right? And drains?
Oh, yes, non-permeable.
Okay, yes, and that's the most, for me, the most important part.
I'll get some hard numbers to you by next one.
Over 100, under 100?
Around.
Around.
I believe he's thinking less than, I want to say around 65.
Okay, so in other words, what we have is, and avoiding a fine if we don't, if we can, and that's, there's nothing better than that. Good.
Thank you. Third item is the recreational trails. Is a, it's an Ohio Department of Natural Resources grant opportunity, and we do have correspondence from Director of Public Works, Mr. Andy Stone, that we will be submitting an application in February. And what this would be, would be extending the bike way across the bridge to university estates. That's the plan for it. It would be the first part of that, and we will have a map and additional details ready. But we wanted to announce it now so that we can move the authorizing ordinance through in adequate time.
Chris, have you done any, has he done any environmental work on this in with respect? I mean, is there any question out there that, would it be bicycles only, or would it be pedestrians also, and?
Well, he's saying that this would be part of the bike paths for.
Okay.
I'm sure it's a shared-use path.
Yeah, is there any environmental, so, question with it? I don't know. I mean, if it's federal money, it'll have to. I just wondered if it had.
Yeah, definitely have to have an EA anyways.
Yeah. Would this be using the old railroad bridge?
Yes.
Yeah, that's why I was worried about it.
Okay, thank you for the question. We'll follow up with that.
I mean, not worried, that's disturbing.
Something to look at before we get too far along in the grant process. Thank you. The last item is to let you know an update on the Mobility Manager Grant that Athens-Hawking-Perry County Community Action Agency submitted to the Department of Transportation earlier this year. It was funded. We've been waiting, it seems like, for several months to, for that agency to be able to post that, or list the position so that we could advertise to hire. And that job description just came out today, and so, we'll be, if anybody needs a copy of that, we can provide that. It'll be posted in the newspapers, I'm sure. But it is for a full-time position to assist the city and the county with transportation, coordinating transportation and mobility issues for the city and county. So, I think that will be a wonderful asset, too. I have a person devoting their time to that and working closely, I'm sure, with the city as well as the county. The person that position we agreed to would be housed at the HAPCAP agency offices, and that's up in Gloucester.
And it's only, how many counties, Athens and Hawking, or is it?
Harry.
Harry? I think it's just Athens, but the Athens-Hawking-Perry County HAPCAP ended up managing it because they have expertise with that. So, that was good news. And does anybody, any other council members have any other items or issues?
Other than transportation, street tour, your, not your council tour, we are working on rescheduling that. I don't know if I need to poll you individually, or if I can just send out an email. We will get it publicized, but we're either looking at the 23rd or the 30th. Yes.
Paula, this is in addition to the fire.
This is, I'm calling this Council City Tour. It would be your both plants and both fire stations.
Okay, thank you. This is the rescheduling.
Yes, it's a street tour. Facility tour.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments on any of our committee meetings? We will be adjourned, we'll have a regular session of council a week from tonight, no, I'm sorry, Tuesday night.
Shucks.
Tuesday, which will make it the 19th? 19th at 7:30.